We think that the future is always going to be wonderful. But life has proved that it is not the same all the time. Things can change, it can change in the snap of a finger. And that is how life is. How are we going to face these things? Are we ready? What is our call? Dear brothers and sisters, dear teenagers, dear youngsters, those of you who have logged in from around the world, we have people connected in from different parts of this world and it's such a joy to have you with us today. And let me tell you, we have such wonderful programs lined up for you today. We have a world-renowned esteemed speaker with us. I will be introducing you to him later on in this program. He is one of a kind and a great apostle in today's world, a great man of God and we will be hearing from him shortly. We also have some very gifted musicians with us and they will be singing some beautiful songs. I hope that you will enjoy those songs. And we also have a sister who will be sharing a life-changing story with us today. You know, stories, they always pull at the strings of our heart. And I believe that this story that you will be hearing today will really challenge your hearts and will really help you to understand what we are trying to say here today. And of course, we have a section for our question and answers because we want to make sure that we take in your questions and try to find answers to those questions. So let me at the beginning remind all of you that in your chat boxes in Zoom, you will find a link to Pigeon Hole, which is our question and answer webpage. So please, please do go to that webpage and put in your questions and God willing, as best as we can, we will try to cover as much as we can within our time limit and we will answer those questions. And even for those questions for which we cannot find answers or we are not able to have them within the time limit, we will make sure that we will reach those answers to you. Because we are living in a time with great questions, especially among youngsters. I had a youngster who just finished his college degree and he was very excited to get a new job, to start working, to start his career, to begin his future. But he told me, "My future looks so bleak. My future looks so hopeless." But is that really true? Is our future really hopeless? Are we really left by God? Is he not in control? What will happen to us in the future? Your brothers and sisters, we have lots to listen today from our wonderful speaker and from our wonderful guests over this program. And without much further ado, let me request brother David Matthew to come forward and lead us in prayer.
Let's pray. God our Father in heaven, we thank you and we praise you, Lord, for this wonderful time that you have given unto us to come before your presence and spend a few minutes with you, listening to your word. Lord, we thank you for all the participants who have joined with us in this session. We thank you for all the leaders and all the members who are going to be with us in the coming couple of hours. Lord, we pray that you may be with the session. We pray that you may lead us and guide us through these sessions. We especially at this time, come with the main speaker of the session into your mighty hands. We pray that you may especially be with him, give him the needed grace from above to speak your word and to change all of our lives. And Lord, when we leave this session, we will be edified and we would be so much better than we have come into the session. Lord, we pray especially for the smooth functioning of the Zoom platform as many of our friends and dear believers are going to join from different parts of this world. We pray that you may enable every session to be spirit-filled and led by you, oh Lord. Lord, we pray that you may be with us till we end the session, Lord. We ask you all these things in the precious and most exalted name of Lord and Savior Christ, we pray. Amen.
Thank you, David, for the prayer. And once again, welcome to all of you who have joined us tonight, today, wherever you are. Let me introduce you to our musicians. We have three musicians today who are very gifted youngsters, Jeremy, Jubin and Justin. And we will quickly go to hear them sing. So let us start with the first song, "Jesus Shall Reign", by our dear brother Jubin.
The next song that we are going to sing is a song that gives us joy. And at the same time, it's a song that gives us hope in our lives. Because the words of this song goes like this. "Jesus shall reign wherever the sun does his successive journeys run. His kingdom stretch from shore to shore till sun shall rise and set no more." Talks about a kingdom that's going to come. Where we will be with our Lord. Doesn't that gives us an immense joy in our hearts? Doesn't that gives us an immense hope? While we sing this song, let these things be ringing in our minds. Let's sing the song. "Jesus shall reign wherever the sun does his successive journeys run. His kingdom stretch from shore to shore till sun shall rise and set no more." Blessings abound. "Blessings abound wherever he reigns. The prisoner loses his chain, though weary finding eternal rest. And all the sons so want our blessings." To our King. "To our King, we highest praise, rising through eternal days. Just and faithful he shall reign, Jesus shall reign." People in raps. "People in raps of every tongue. Well, Lord, his love and sweeted song. An infant voices shall proclaim, pereally praising all his saints. To our King, to our King, we highest praise, rising through eternal days. Just and faithful he shall reign, Jesus shall reign." Let every creature. "Let every creature rise and bring blessing and honor to our King. Angels descend and begat songs again, and not repeat the rauding hymn. To our King, we highest praise, rising through eternal days. Just and faithful he shall reign, Jesus shall reign." Again, to our King. "To our King, we highest praise, rising through eternal days. Just and faithful he shall reign, Jesus shall reign. Just and faithful he shall reign, Jesus shall reign." Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Jubin, for that wonderful song. Kingdoms rise and kingdoms fall. Kings rise and kings fall. Nothing stays the same, but as we just sang, "Jesus reigns, he is faithful, he will reign and he never changes." What a wonderful king we have, what a great master we have, what a great king that we have to follow. May his precious name be glorified. We have another amazing song by our dear brothers Jeremy and Justin, one of the most talented youngsters. Jeremy is playing the keyboard and Justin will be singing this song. And I request Jeremy and Justin to sing for us. He is exalted.
Hello, everyone. Hope you all are doing good and keeping safe, wherever you are. We are so happy to have all of you back again with us for the session. Let us sing this song, "He is Exalted, the King is Exalted on high." I will praise him. He is exalted, forever exalted, and I will praise his name. This is a very familiar chorus and I request all of you to sing along as we praise God. "He is exalted, the King is exalted on high. I will praise him. He is exalted, forever exalted, and now will praise his name. He is the Lord, forever his true charing. Heaven and earth rejoice in his holy name. He is exalted, the King is exalted on high. He is exalted, the King is exalted on high. I will praise him. He is exalted, forever exalted, and now will praise his name. He is the Lord, forever his true charing. Heaven and earth rejoice in his holy name. He is exalted, the King is exalted on high. He is the Lord, forever his true charing. Heaven and earth rejoice in his holy name. He is exalted, the King is exalted on high. He is exalted, the King is exalted on high."
Praise God. He is exalted, the King is exalted, forever and ever on high. He is the most exalted King. What a wonderful Savior we have, what a wonderful King we serve. He is exalted, forever exalted. Thank you, Jeremy and Justin, for that wonderful song. And we are going to hear from them again during this program and I hope all of you will enjoy their singing. Now, we have a very interesting sister with us. Her life is an amazing journey. It's a great inspiration to all of us. I want to introduce to you Sister Sadabdi Banerjee from Calcutta. She was raised in Calcutta, but she lives in North America, in the US right now. To give you a small introduction about Sadabdi. Sadabdi is a first-generation believer from Calcutta. Presently, she finished her masters in Christian counseling from Moody Theological Seminary. She is married to Sibin Sam and God has blessed them with two cute little children and they are going to be joining us from Detroit. I would humbly request all of you to keep your ears and eyes fixed on this dear woman of God and to listen to her story and what she has to tell us today. And I'm sure that it will be life-changing. And I request your sister to come forward and share her story.
Praise the Lord. I'm Hindi, we say Jai Masiki. It's such a privilege for me to be able to join you all and I'm so humbled and I'm so thankful that God has given us this wonderful opportunity to hear and come to his presence, listen from God's servant about the vision that God has for us. And as just a little bit introduction, like how brother Jason said, I'm right now talking to you guys from the city of, close to the city of Detroit, in a suburb of Detroit. It's a hot day for us, 90 degrees is very hot. And in fact, I remember like when my husband Sibin was in Bahrain and he would say that he would be going to school or whatever work and it would be 140 degrees. And I can't even imagine how hot it is in Gulf. I have never been there, but I know like a lot of you are there right now. So hats off to you guys. Also, that reminds me when I was, so two and a half, three, three years ago when I got married and I had, it was here, it was minus 20 degrees Fahrenheit. Then I was going to get married and that was in Kerala. So from here to Calcutta, that was from minus 20 to 50 degrees or 60 degrees. That was like a 70 degrees, I was sweating. Then I went to Kerala and I was like, "I got love." But in spite of all these things, I was so complaining. But in our, this particular pandemic really helped me to introspect. I'm like, "Man, we complain so much." I complain so much. And I know, I'm not thankful enough for all the good things that God has given us, the blessings. The fact that you and I are able to join in Zoom. I mean, can you think how many people don't even have a smartphone? And they don't have a good home. So as I want to take a little bit time to share my testimony, I put it in a video just in case the connection goes bad. So I was like, "Brother Jason, can we do a video instead?" And he was very gracious. So my testimony, I put it in a video and after a video, I'll take a couple of minutes to share a little bit and then Babu Uncle will probably come in afterwards and share from God's word.
Good evening, friends. Today I want to share with you one of the most important message I can give to you in this day and age. This is a message of not someone else, but my own life, how I made a journey from being a staunch Hindu to a follower of Christ. I was born in the family of a staunch Hindu home, in a home which was in Calcutta, a family which would worship idols day in and out. It was a home where I learned and grew up and I used to believe that there is one God. There is one God whom we worship in different names. I thought, I call Krishna, you call Allah, somebody else calls Christ. It was just one God. But the thing is, what I did, what was so difficult for me was for missionaries or Christians to say that I am right or you are wrong. I thought, "It's all the same." And we used to worship like all kinds of gods and goddesses. We used to worship all religious things. So it happened so that on one Christmas day, when my mom had given me a children's illustrated Bible as a Santa Claus gift. And it happened that, I never really liked to read that book because I thought, "Why do I need to read what a Christian's holy Bible is?" So I just kept that book away. But when I was in 11th grade, I had a friend, a Catholic friend. And she, I just wanted to know what, how she is, what she thought. And my mom was here, she was like, "Why do you not read this book? I bought this with so much money and at least you can read it once." So just to stop her from nagging and understand my friend, I started reading this children's illustrated Bible. I told my friend that I read the Bible. That was not true. Because in my mind, I knew that this is not the Bible. So I started feeling very guilty. And like every year, Gideon's would come to our schools and give New Testament. And so just to make my words true, I started reading the New Testament. As I started reading the New Testament, it was like a book that initially I thought, "Yeah, it's, Jesus is like one of our gurus. He taught good things and people always say bad things about good people and finally they put him on the cross." And like in between even the miracles, even our Hindu gurus did that. So there was nothing really special about him. Yes, his teachings were of a good quality, but that's about it. But it was when I came to the Book of Romans, it was like a lightning fell from the sky. In chapter one of Romans, it was so amazing to see that a book that is written 2,000 years ago can describe today. In that book, in that chapter of Romans 1, it talked about how we had made idols and that was against the very nature of God, that God is spirit. And I realized that even as Hindus, in Hinduism, we never always worship idols. There was a point when there was no idols. And so we made as a society and as my forefathers, we committed sin and we changed God's glory. And the amount of sins that are given in Romans 1, it was like a commentary of today's world and today's newspaper. You can take a newspaper in chapter 1, it's like that. In chapter 2, it was about the religious leaders and as Brahmins, we were the religious leaders. And it's almost like as Brahmins, we had made rules that helped ourselves and we didn't care about the people as much as much we cared about ourselves. And in chapter 2 talks about how religious leaders are like blind, leading other blind into destruction. I thought in my head that, who said that as Brahmins, we are better than Sudras or other lower caste people or Dalits? And those are rules written by my forefathers that helped us. So all this religion that I so was proud of, these are man-made rules. I came to chapter 3 and it was like, "Oh goodness." It was like, it was somebody reading my own heart. From head to toe, I was in sin. I was like, "How could something that described me almost like an X-ray of my thought?" And it was, I was like, "Okay, if I am, okay, I know I'm sinner. I know I'm not perfect. I know God is perfect, he's the righteous judge." And I'm trying to do all these things to please God. I was, you know, without drinking water and eating food, there were days I would fasten to the gods to please the gods. I would do meditation from when I was two years old and I'm doing all these things and giving flowers and fruits and food to all these idols to please God. But if God is holy, how can he accept all of this and just look over my sin? If he is holy, then he cannot accept me. If he accepts all these things, then he's not holy and he cannot be God. Chapter 4, I didn't understand much, but chapter 5, that is where God caught me. It is exactly opposite of what Hinduism talks. In Hinduism, one of the most important slogans or most important sentence of Hinduism is, that means, you know, God comes in different ages to destroy the wicked and establish the righteous. And opposite of that is Romans chapter 5, verse 7 and 8. It says, "For scarcely for somebody would die for a righteous man, perhaps for a godly man, one might even dare to die." But 5 verse 8, "But God demonstrates his own love towards us in that while we were still sinners, Christ died for us." And it was like, "My goodness, how can God who created the heavens and earth love me so much that he would die for me?" And I just remembered what I read in the Gospels. You know, from when Christ was put on the cross, you know, when I had thought bad things, they put the nail on his head. When I said lies and said bad words, they spat on him. They took his beard, they slapped him. When I did bad things, they pierced his hands, they hit him. And when I went away from God, they pierced his nails and head to toe, he replaced me on the cross. So when, as I kept reading the Bible, it was like the scripture kept confirming that I had believed and I was saved. And it led to so much of problems at home. People would humiliate me, people would, you know, just there was always fighting. No matter what happened, it was my fault. You know, it was not, life was not a bed of roses. I had to go through so much and even my family, you know, it was a loss of family prestige, it was loss of, you know, all the dreams that my parents had, it was a loss of so many things. You know, my relatives, my family, they would just look and they would just put us down. But what I gained instead was incredible. I was a child of God. I had gained God and, you know, if I had a relationship with my father, I had peace and joy in my heart. I had gained much more, you know, I had a good fellowship, a good church. You know, so I just want to read out one verse for you, my friend. In one verse, if you see in the Book of Philippians, chapter 3, verse 8, it says, "Indeed, I count everything as a loss because of the surpassing worth of knowing Christ, Jesus, my Lord. And for his sake, I have suffered the loss or all things I count as rubbish in order that I might gain Christ. If you have not gained Christ, today is your day of salvation. Will you believe? I pray that God would help you and God would speak to your heart and may God bless you."
Thank you for listening to that video. I just recorded that yesterday, being afraid that something might happen to the wifi and if I'm not able to speak to you guys. But you know, as you heard my testimony and as I was telling, like, you know, sometimes God has given us so much and we still complain. You know, we look at the negative side. Our eyes are like, you know, always on what struggles we have and what problems we have. And that is where today I want to tell you a little bit, you know, before Babu Uncle talks about eternity, I just want you to come back and think about if you can take a glass and put it on your eyes and on that glass is written eternity. So seeing from eternity and backwards. And this is where I want to, I want to challenge you, my friends. My dear friends, think about it. If you wear a cooling glass, a sunglass, and you see that your eyes, everything looks darker, doesn't it? And think about if, you know, instead of that sunglass, if you had an eternity glass. So think about God. God is not in time with you and me. God is outside time and he is looking from eternity and he can see everything in a good perspective. So that is why you and I need to have this glasses of eternity, the eternity that Babu Uncle will soon talk about. So my question to you is, what do our present lives look like if we see them through the eyes of eternity? Before we see a couple of, one or two points or three points about it, I want to just tell you this much. Just having the glasses of eternity will not make our present struggles any less difficult. Our present life, because we are stuck in time, will still be very hard. And I am a counselor. I deal with people when they have, nobody comes to a counselor usually when they're happy. When they are sad and when they're struggling, they would come to people like us. And I see the brokenness, you know, and that struggle that today you and I are going through because of this pandemic or so many other situations in our life, our present situation will still be painful because we are stuck in time. The other thing is, however, if we have the eyes of eternity, the glasses of eternity, it will help us to understand that this suffering is for a moment. And a lot of people, when they come to me, especially in situations like this, we struggle with depression. And when we are depressed, one of the main key... And uh and when we are depressed, one of the main key part in our head is, will this ever change? My friends, like uh somebody like Jason Brother just said, I don't know, somebody was about to get into job, somebody is about my, some, one of my friend is about to join college, but they can't because they are stuck and question in their heart is, will this ever change? Will anything be back to normal? Will I have a blessed future? And the uh in second Corinthians four, verse sixteen to eighteen, I will not let you ask you to take it there. But I just want you to know that in the scripture, it says that, you know, the main thing that Paul tells in second Corinthians is to not lose heart. Because depression and Satan using those depressive thoughts will make us believe that, you know, nothing will change. There is no future, but do not lose heart. But and the last part of that phrase in second Corinthians four, verse sixteen to eighteen is and we need to focus. So we are to look not to the things that are seen, but to the things that are not seen. And because the things that we see will pass away, but the things we cannot see is forever. It's gonna not gonna stop. So it is very important that we look beyond today into the future. And uh also, the second thing I want to talk to you about is sin. When we are stuck at home, there is place for sin and to ha- uh head is devil's workshop. Uh sin takes a big role in our life. And it is important for us to understand that there will be a day that we will hate ourselves for committing that sin. And we will just hate that fact that, why did I do that? And now the sin looks very nice and comfortable and attractive right now. But in the lens of eternity, it's horrible. So in second Peter, chapter three, verse uh thirteen and fourteen, it tells that we need to be blameless and at peace with God. When we are at sin, we are doing sin, we cannot have peace with God. And the final thing I want to talk to you is about money, about wealth. Like, you know, as when we grew up, my parents, they had a great hope that I will become what a doctor or engineer or whatever. All parents have that wish. In fact, in US, you know who is the richest community? It's not Americans. The richest minorities are American Indians and American Pakistanis. Because we hoard money. We don't, we don't save. We think, my children, my children's education, my old age, my blah blah blah. We need a, the largest houses are belonging to American Indians. We hoard money and we pride ourselves in that. First generation Indians struggle with that. But my, uh what I want to encourage you is even as second generation Americans are understanding, and I want you two guys to also think about it, is what is the role of money? In the Matthew, chapter six, nineteen to twenty-one, Lord said, you know, do not store up treasures that where mosques can rot. And you know, the money we can't take beyond the grave, so or we can't take to heaven. So we need to invest into our future. So and conclusion, I want you to re- remember, do not give up, second Corinthians, do not give up. And then also remember that nothing, no matter this uh trouble that we are going through now, like Paul says in Romans chapter eight, neither death nor life, nor uh angels nor demons, nor present, nor future, nor any power, nor height or depth, nor anything else can ever separate us from the love of God. To Jesus Christ our Lord. So I pray that God would give us this of eternity as Babu Uncle takes us there, and I pray that God would help us to remember that.
Thank you, Sister Shadabdi, for that wonderful testimony and taking us through your, uh through your life story. Thank you for giving us uh the, the illustration of those glasses with eternity printed on it. Because we often fail to look at eternity, we look, uh we look with the glasses, but we never fail to see eternity through those glasses. So thank you so much for the testimony and I feel, I believe that many of us um have been challenged by your story. Any- anything that we give a price for is very valuable. And it's amazing to see the prize that you have given, uh to live for the Lord and to serve him as a family. And I know Brother Sibin, uh personally, we have worked together in Bahrain. Uh he used to take Bible classes for the um for the teenagers and for the youngsters in the uh in the labor camps uh in Bahrain. And he is very active in, in many parts of the Middle East. Uh he's also a very good speaker. Um and so the Lord has joined them together and I, and I know that they're doing a wonderful ministry there. To the sisters who are on this uh on this call, I also want to remind you that um Sister Shadabdi is a qualified Christian counselor. Uh so please go to our PGN whole link in your chat, you will find the link. Please to go to that link and you can ask her questions. If there is anything that you want to direct to her, please mention it. And at the end of our question answer session, um our dear sister will, will give you answers to your questions. So thank you so much, uh and um and may God bless you as a, as a family. Now, we are going uh to our main speaker for, for tonight. Um as I told in the, in, in the beginning, he's a, he's a world renowned figure, known all over the world just by his name. I can see that we have more than uh three hundred and eighty participants in this, in this Zoom call right now. And it's so wonderful to have all of you. We just love you so much for taking your time, taking the effort to join this call and to hear from us tonight. It's so wonderful to have, uh to have all of you from the bottom of our hearts and and tonight we are going to listen to what it really means. What does it mean to have that vision, that eternal perspective? What is that vision millennia? What does it mean to train with him, to reign with him? Let me give you a, a short introduction of uh dear Dr. Babu Vargis Uncle. He's a very esteemed speaker. He's a student of the Bible and of history. He is well known across the world as a journalist, as a historian and as an author. He has taken it as his mission in life to make Bible relevant to contemporary society. Most of his research is on the impact of the Bible on the nations. His doctrinal thesis is in linguistics investigating the contribution of Bible translators. He has authored over ten books, mostly on missions. And the other day when I spoke to him, um and I was asking him if he kept himself busy during the Corona. I can tell you that he's worked on four books. I, I couldn't even read one book. And he's finished writing four books. So he's a very prolific author, a great man of God. And a, a very good um speaker as well, coming from a journalistic background. I believe that for those of us who are listening, I can tell you this will not be a sermon. This will be a talk. And uncle will be del- delivering to us a talk and, and uh and we, we, we will be enjoying this, I'm sure. I just want to show you one book that I have with me, written by um dear uncle, uh and it says, Let There Be India. Yes. It's as big as a dictionary, as you can see, but it is one of the most amazing books that I've read. It has challenged my life. And it is filled with so much information that often we as Christians in India, we've, we have failed to notice the impact of Christians across life, across culture, across the history of our beloved country. Such an amazing book. He has written so many books and I encourage all of you to, to read his books. I will not take much more time. I would like to request uh Dr. Babu Vargis Uncle to come forward and he will uh give us a talk for the next forty-five minutes.
Yeah, namaskar. What a delight to be here this evening with you all. It's a wonderful opportunity to share things together. Especially, I'm so thankful to the Ajwan Assembly and the youth around the globe for praying for this program and organizing. Shadabdi, I have no words to thank you. I met Shadabdi while she was just still a student at Paul Vargis's house in Calcutta. What a joy. Thank the Lord for your consistency in faith and thank the Lord for using you mightily for his kingdom. Hallelujah. What a joy. You know, all the gray hair people like us. If we are able to see people like you, vibrant, young, challenging, that's all. We are so delighted. Now it's time, we can go. You will take care. Thank you so much. Now, thank the Lord for this uh great Zoom technology. Where did this technology come from? You know, if you read Luke's Gospel, chapter nineteen, verse thirty-nine and forty, you will know where did this technology come. Jesus Christ was traveling on a dongi to Jerusalem. Then the disciples and the Lord of children began to sing, hallelujah, hallelujah, hosanna. Then the religious leaders didn't like it. They said, come on, stop it. Jesus asked your disciples to stop this singing. You know, what did the Lord say? If they stop, stones will speak. What is this stone? Silica, right? All your computer technology, all your digital communication is from, computer chips are from silica. Thank the Lord. So what, two thousand years ago, the Lord said, it has become so true today. That because of this silica, because of this stone, throughout the world globally, round the clock, the name of the Lord Jesus Christ is lifted up. Hallelujah. Are you not excited? This evening, I'm excited for this Zoom technology and old man, but still the Lord enabled me just with the help of my son to zoom in all these things. This is the beginning of a great revolution. We people using technology to transform this society. You know, Vishal Mangal Wadhli used to tell me very often, we invented printing in this world, but we used it. But what about the film? What about radio? Except from the beginning of, of Billy Graham and others, the world has lost. We never used answer TV and film and other media, but I'm so delighted we are using our social media and all modern technologies. Thank the Lord for that. Now, well, let's thank the Lord for this opportunity and I'm straight going into the subject. You know, the old Jason has said, the subject is vision millennia and eternity with the King. Train now to reign with him. A talk based on the Bible of the current of faiths. What does the Bible have to do with the current of faiths? I would say that everything that happens is based on the Bible, based on the revelation that we have got. It seems and we said that history is his story. The story of Jesus, the story of God getting involved in the history of mankind. There are no two histories in this world. There's only one history, history of God at work in the history of mankind. That's the most important thing. Now, where did this, all this technology begin? All this modern scientific technology began especially in Rome and Europe with the monastery, Catholic monastery. Then again, most of the scientific developments today has been triggered or invented by Bible people, either Jews or Christ- Christ lovers. This is the truth. This is a reality. People do not want to accept it. Now, what do we have to do to know the impact of the present on the future? Now, the great thing in life is to know the past of our life. I'm also a student of history. I'm a student of the Bible. I use Google, I use Bible. But what I'm trying to do is get Bible and Google together. But Bible can give you info, uh Google can give us information, but Bible can give us information and transformation. So Bible is good for both for head and for heart. That's what I'm trying to mix together. I'm trying to look at the history of the world based on biblical revelation. Now, very often people say, Bible is a religious book. It's a Christian book. It's a spiritual book. We have nothing to do with that. Is it so? Yes, it is. It has a religious aspect to that. It's a spiritual book. But beyond that, it is B I B L E. It is basic instruction before leaving earth. It is God's voice in man's vocabulary. It is God speaking to mankind. So if you want to know the past of this world and our own past, where did I come from? Why am I here? Where am I going? Only Bible can give you the answer, the perfect answer for that. No other book can give you because it is God's book. God's book has all the revelation about the past, the present and the future. It's not speculation, but revelation. This God's book is the inspired, infallible, inerrant, eternal word of God. Heaven and earth will pass away, but my word will never pass away. Shadabdi just shared with us how abortion of the Bible transformed our lives. I know how difficult it was for her to come out of her traditional faith. It's not an easy thing, but what powerful. She, she, she could get hold on to the Bible and she understood it as a divine uh pronouncement for her life. Now, let me start with the present situation to understand the future and understand the past. Today, as you analyze the present situation, the kandabari happenings in this world, you all know are now part of it. We are in the midst of it, COVID nineteen. A microscopic bubble. Over one million people have been affected. Over five hundred thousand people have already dead. And the statistics, it's going up, up and up. An Israeli virologist, renowned doctor recently said, this is not to scare, he said, but this is the reality. This coronavirus may go on for two or three years more. It would affect around eighty percent of the people and twenty percent will die. Corona has become a vehicle for the death of people. In Bombay alone, we had our dear brother, Baby Kuti. He worked in the slums of Bombay for thirty-five years, amidst hunger and not even having a house. He has been one of the finest evangelists of this country. But it pleased the Lord to take him, to be with him. COVID has been the vehicle, we have been praying for. I'm sure today he's enjoying his presence, personal presence with the Lord Jesus Christ. He has done a mighty work. Through him, hundreds of people have come to the Lord. He has shared the God, the word of God with thousands of people. When many people were un- were afraid to have public conventions, he held on public uh convention every year. What a commitment. But it pleased the Lord to take him. So COVID is only a means for us. Now again, pandemics, plague, pestilence has been there for years. It's nothing new. People have been uh uh have been uh have, have died of COVID. Millions have died. But now think of other things. People dying of violence, war, bloodshed, communal riots. Think of all those things. But think of then abortions, millions of children are killed, murdered by parents in America and the West and in other countries, abortion. What about suicide? What about death? By drinks and drugs and sexual uh uh conducts. So people die. So what does it mean? So whether it is COVID or natural or accident or an uh or uh or uh or any other thing, people will die. COVID, you will die. With one of the reason, that's all. So what we are trying to say is that death is a must. All of us who are born will die. What does it mean? We all come with an expiry date. When I was young in my village, I should remember when people die, we would go to the telegraph office those days. And this is the sentence, so and so expired. I didn't know much of that meaning at that time, but I knew it was death. But now I know the meaning, expiry. Do we know that? Jason said, you know, young man ask, what will me, what will happen to me after death? Don't we know that we have to die one day? We all come with an expiry date. But people are fearful. Today, one thing that we see is the fear. People are fear. They're fear of everything. They're fear of death, fear of future, fear of family, fear of family. Death can come any moment. But can we avoid dying? We have to face that. Now, because of this COVID, we have to divide the whole history of the future of the world into two. Before COVID and after COVID. Pre-COVID and post-COVID. We have already divided the history of the world into two. B.C. and A.D., before Christ and Anno Domini, the year of the law. That is there. But today, COVID has changed the whole lifestyle of humanity. Never in the, in the history of humanity, such a thing has happened globally affecting the present and the future. So the first thing is the fear. Fear of death, fear of family. The second contemporary issue is that an economic tsunami is going to come. I was a journalist in a Middle East country and I have been, I had the opportunity to, to interview a lot of economists of the AGCC, Arab Gulf Council and European Community, apart from a lot of financial experts. Oil used to be, petrol used to be the backbone of the universe, of the universe, of the commerce of the universe. That keep change, of course, still it has its power. But there is no going to be an economic tsunami. This COVID has, it is the byproduct of, of this COVID economic tsunami. Millions of people are going to die, not necessarily of COVID, but for, because of hunger. Do you know that? 80% of Indians today are going hungry. Millions of Indians are going hungry. The slums of Bombay, million, lakhs of people are there, they have nothing to eat. That's a major issue we need to understand. Fear of finance, fear of family, fear of hunger, fear of death. The third contemporary issue we need to deal with is the depth of truth. The whole world is now lying in, is, is living in lies. Whether it is politics, economy or social relationship. Where is truth? We say in India, satyameva jayade, truth shall triumph. But where is truth today? The whole world is trying to build themselves up on lies. So that's, that's another area we need to address, contemporary issue. Another issue that we need to address is the postmodern society. The other day I saw an advertisement of AG. You can make your own rules, that's what postmodernism. You make your own rules. Postmodern thinking says there are no absolutes. Only everything is relative. For example, a truth for me need not be a truth for others. Also things which I consider moral need not be a moral for other, of a moral nature to others. I make my own rules. I am not accountable to anyone, including my parents, including to God, to my teachers or to the society. Postmodern society that we need to address. So fear of future. Fear of what's happening around in this country and everywhere. But how can we face it? How can we face the future? How can we win over our fear? There are two options. Either fight it or take a flight. Either fight or flee, escape or engage. As young men and women, what is your fear today? We can do two things. Face everything and run or face everything and rise. F.E.A.R. Face everything and run or face everything and rise. It's a new perspective. This evening, may I ask you very personally, brother sister, what is your concern today? Some of you would have been thinking of going for higher studies. Some of you have been waiting for a great professional opportunity. Some of your dreams to travel outside your country to the Western nations and settle there. Some of you are married and were trying to join your spouses. Some of you have been looking for a high professional achievement. But today, you are disappointed. You are dejected. You are worried of future. Now nationally, we in India, we are passing through tough times. As I said, 80% of Indians are heading for deep financial crisis. There could be a great famine of hand old misery. Moreover, please listen to this. Democracy and secularism and freedom of faith has to be sustained in our country. India is also facing border attacks from most of our neighbors. Then globally, US election is due this year, this November. Tough fight between Joe Biden of Democratic Party and Donald Trump of Republican Party. USA is in the grip of liberal extremes, trying to overthrow all biblical foundations. In spite of Brexit, listen to, to Europe, Europe is rising. But a global economic tsunami is threatening all of us. The world is in panic. What does all mean contemporary, in a contemporary analysis? In one word, word, the world is heading toward a new world order. It is heading towards a one world health system with WHO steering it. If you official, they are not elected, that's going to be the future. I'll explain later. A small central authority can control the whole world. We are also heading towards one world digital communication controlled system. One world economy, one world currency, one world central authority, one world government and one word religion. Now we have short, we have briefly analyzed the current situation. Now you may ask me, why, what we have to do with that? Yes, this current situation has happened not as an accident. There are no accidents in history. History is controlled by the Creator. This is what we need to look at. History, we need to look at the past. As I said, where have we come from? Why are we here? Young people, have you thought of that? Why are we here? And where are we going to? So to, to know that, I am going to use some words beginning with, with the alphabet C. Watch for it. Conception. The universe is conceived by God. It's not an accident or a product of evolution. Our God created everything. It is the master, it's a master plan of God. Genesis chapter one and two gives you all the details. We all know it. He is the Creator. In the beginning, God created everything. God, Jesus Christ is the beginningless, beginner of all beginnings. So he is a creator God. Secondly, he is a communication, communicating God. God communicates to us. He communicates through nature, through our conscience, through Ten Commandments, through his word, the Bible. He communicated through Jesus Christ. If the beginning was the word and the word became flesh and wealth among us, he continues to communicate through the Bible and now God is communicating the world through his children, the bloodbought Christ lovers. So he is not only a communicating God, he is a covenant making God. God has made a covenant with us, with humanity. He had made a legal covenant. He had made a two legal covenants known as the Old Covenant and the New Covenant. He has given it in writing. God deals with humankind with, with, with written communication, not only oral written. So two covenants are Old Testament and the New Testament, the Bible is the written covenant. So he is not only a covenant making God, he is a covenant keeping God. So what is revealed in that covenant book as history has taken place fully and it will be fulfilled fully. So we need to understand the past, the present and the future. Now, according to the history of this universe, we can, according to the Bible, we can divide the history into three. Creation, corruption, recreation or generation, degeneration or regeneration. We were created by God, but we sinned and, and we fell in corruption. But God had to, had to come down to recreate the whole world. Now, why did God create us? We need to, to listen to Genesis chapter 128. That's why I am going to discuss in detail. God blessed Adam and Eve and he told Adam and Madam, be fruitful and multiply. Fill the earth, subdue it, have dominion over the fish of the sea or the birds of the air and over every living thing that moves on the earth. So authority, power, control, dominion is given to us, you and I. So mankind was created to be the rulers of the paradise, the rulers of the world. But we lost the dominion and the rule of the world. That's the tragedy. So of the past, we began with great potential, but we lost it. We lost sight of the power to rule the world. So mankind was to rule the world directly through God. That was what God expected us to do, but we lost it. How did we lose it? Then we need to look at Genesis chapter three, we all know his story. I am not going to give in details. Chapter three of Genesis. Satan, a serpent goes to Adam and Eve and that was the voice of deception. Satan made them to succumb to his words because of disobedience came to death. So the virus of death ended us through Adam and Eve. So when we, we, we are born, we are born with the virus of death. It is appointed unto man once to die and afterwards judgment. So don't worry about COVID, we need, we will have to die. So it was voice of deception, but then we see God coming down and calling Adam, where are you? Voice of love. That is the greatness of God. Even if you disobey, God will come to you and say, where are you? Then we see the voice of judgment. God cursed the serpent and the ground. That is why we have all these economic problems, environmental problems, problems of the earth. God judged the earth and mankind. Finally, we see the growing grace of God. Uh? What did you see in Genesis chapter three, verse 15? We read the promise of the redemption of mankind. The, the seed of the woman shall bruise the head of the serpent. That is why we see that Jesus Christ, the Son of God had to come. So we see the voice of grace of God. From Genesis chapter one to chapter 11, we have the story of creation, the story of corruption, story of condemnation. Then, once after the age of innocence, we have the age of conscience. Then we were allowed to live the way we want, but what happened? Sin was rampant. Then God saw that no more he can deal with the people of this world. What did God say? I will deal with mankind, I will bring a great flood over mankind. That's what exactly happened. The judgment of, of God through the great flood, so condemnation. But, but God saved the family of Noah. Now, as I used to say, always, the whole entire humanity that we have today are the, are the children of shame, harm and your faith. So the whole world in chapter 10 of Genesis, we read the dispersion of the, of the humanity to the end there continents. You know, during the time of Pelag, continental ship took place. They were all together in the Turkey area, in the Euphrates area, but they had to move to different places of the world. So creation, condemnation, then we have what happened? The first year no took place in chapter 11 of Genesis. First you know, we will make a name for us, we will build a city, we will make a united government, United Nations. But God under we said, no, first you know, they were trying to build without God. They wanted to question God and that, that was thwarted by God. Now, look at that. Now, since this has failed, God had already started a master plan. What was the master plan of God? God acts in history in a timeline. It is not a hit and run. Our God has a master plan right from the day of creation to, to the, to the day of redemption and to the day of recreation. Now, we could see that God has divided the timeline, not necessarily the timeline of the calendar line that we have, but because it is not Kronos, it is Kairos, the age differences, different ages. God has divided the history of the world. The age of innocence, it was perfection. The age of innocence was from creation to fall. The age of conscience, the timeline of conscience was from fall to flood. The timeline of human government was from the flood to the Tower of Babel. The age of patriarchs was from Abraham to bondage. The timeline of law was from Moses to Christ. The timeline of grace was from, from Pentecost to rapture. The time of judgment will be from rapture to the return of Christ. Then we will have the millennium. Then we will have eternity. That's where we are going to sit now. Now, our title is that, uh? A vision of millennium. How did millennium begin? What will happen now? Sister, according to the Bible, God has divided the whole humanity into four groups. God today is dealing with humanity into four groups. Number one, Jews or the nation of Israel. Number two, non-Jews. Again, divided into Christ lovers and Christ rejecters. No other group. No American, no Indian, no Malayali, no Madrasian, no Marathi. God looks down to the world and watches over 800 crores of people, 8 billion people as only two types of people. Either they are Christ lovers or they are Christ rejecters, that's all. Dear brothers and sisters, this morning, this evening, I want to ask you. Christ lover lover is the one who has accepted Jesus Christ as his or her personal Savior and the Lord, who has established a personal relationship with the Lord Jesus Christ. Christ rejectors are those who have left, who denied the lordship of Christ. So this evening, Jesus Christ is looking down upon you. Are you a child of mine? Are you a Christ lover or a Christ projector? Now, God is going to deal with you. As a Jew, a non-Jew, Christ lover or Christ rejector? Now what's going to happen to the world? So how God is going to deal with the Christ lovers? I am going to use again an alphabet R. For the future of the world, that's going, what is going to happen? A young man asked us, asked this morning, what will happen to me? What will after, after death? This is what? The Bible says, first Thessalonians chapter four, the whole story of what's going to happen. The whole Bible, you have plenty of the, of the recorded statements of what will happen after our death. Now look at this R I am going to use. Apostle Paul says, by the revelation of history, by the revelation of the word, I tell you, there is a return of Jesus Christ. Revelation and return. It's not a speculation, it's not a concoct, the coming of Christ, the return of Jesus Christ is not a speculation, a concoct. The coming of Christ, the return of Jesus Christ is not a speculation, a concocted story of Apostle Paul for anybody yet. It is by the revelation, by the inspired, infallible, inner and word of God, we are sure that Jesus Christ is going to return. So he returns in two ways. There are two stages of the return of our blessed Lord. When first he returns to the mid-sky privately, when he returns, two things will take place. According to 1 Thessalonians chapter 4, from verses 15 to 18, you all know the passage, I'm not going to repeat it. It says, "By the revelation, I tell you, there is a return of Christ." When Jesus returns, what will happen? Those who are dead in Christ Jesus, those who are born in Christ Jesus, those who live in Jesus Christ, those who died in Jesus, those who have died in Jesus Christ, they will rise, there is resurrection of the dead in Christ. Secondly, those who are alive as Christ lover, they will be caught up. So the resurrected and the resurrected, the dead in Christ will be resurrected and those who are alive will be raptured and both will have reunion with the Lord Jesus Christ in the midday. They will be there for seven years. Young men and women, are you listening? This is going to happen. So if you die of COVID now or any other reason, if you are a Christ lover, this is going to happen to you, my dear young brother and sister. We will be caught up within the twinging of an eye. We will be taken up to be with the Lord Jesus. He is going to come back and we are going to listen to him and we are going to be with him for there, maybe for seven years. So there'll be reunion, there is revelation, there's a return of Christ, there is resurrection, there is rapture, there is reunion. Then there will be a reward for us. And we are going to get rewards. You know what's going to happen? What is the reward? It is not sohnachandi, it is not the golden thing, maybe that I don't know. No, it is the awarding of position and power to rule the world for 1,000 years. That's what we are going to get. That is the reward. We all have to stand before the judgment seat of Christ, young men and women. You are going to get, how you are going to rule the world, we are going to get the reward awarded. We will be awarded the reward there. So, but what will happen? I just want to take a little distraction on that. What is going to happen? When we are there for seven years there, or maybe a little different, we don't know. We believe will be seven years. During that time, what will happen? That is the most important thing. During that time, a global dictator will be taking over the rule of this world. I told you, Jesus Christ is going to come to the mid-sky, mid-air with a commanding shout. And he's going to come with the sound of the trumpet. He's going to come with the voice of the archangel. But now, what will happen? As we are there in the mid-sky, what will happen? Global dictator is going to take place, take over the world. This is very serious. There are five, six things I would like you to remind. The signs of the times. The return of the Lord is imminent. We don't set dates, but we see. Number one, first is the rebirth of Israel. May 14, 1948. Today it is 72 years. After thousands of years of wandering, the rebirth of Israel was predicted and it took place. Jesus Christ himself said in 1870, it happened, the dispersion of the Jews from Jerusalem. Now, the rebirth of Israel. Secondly, we know the declaration of Jerusalem, the eternal capital. Thirdly, the realignment of the European nations. In spite of the Brexit, Europe, the 10-nation power is going to come. 10-nation defense and other economic system is going to come and a leader is going to come out of that. Realignment of European nations. Then increase in pestilence, in plague, in pandemics and corona-like viruses. Then fifthly, increase in famine, in earthquake, volcano, wars, violence and bloodshed. Then increase in lawlessness. We know what's happening around the world, lawlessness, worldwide chaos. Seven, increase in sin, family divorces, drinks, drugs, homosexual lifestyle, abortions, satanic worship and new age movement. Increase in knowledge, technology, faster, better, quicker, speedier, artificial intelligence. Then economic tsunami. This will create a world ruler to take, we call him Antichrist, I call him a global dictator. He is going to dictate the world, control the world through a digital control system, number system, that we have already seen, that it is possible, as the bankers are doing, Aadhaar card, other things, a digital control system. So the next thing that's going to happen immediately is the rapture of we, the Christ lovers. Let us die today. Where are we going to be? We are going to be present with the Lord. All those our dear ones who have died recently of COVID, they are with the Lord. What a joy, absent from the body, present with Christ. Now, the 10-nation European Federation will bring forth a global dictator. He will have, make a seven-year agreement with the nation of Israel. He will have a peace agreement, Daniel chapter 9, 26 to 27. He will build a Jewish temple there. After three and a half years, he will break the agreement. Then he will move his capital to Jerusalem. He will set up his image in the temple. We read in 2 Thessalonians and Revelation 13. The global dictator will control this world. He will force all people to worship him. At this time, God will send a great tribulation to the earth. My dear brothers and sisters, if you are a Christ lover, you will be taken up before all these things. But if you are a Christ rejector, please remember, please remember, you are going to go through the greatest terror the world has ever seen. A terror that's going to be sent by God himself. The terror of the great tribulation that's going to come upon this world for seven years. Incredible, unbelievable terror, nobody can withstand. Only a Brahmin will survive there. Then at last, by the end of that, by the end of the seven years, then end of that great tribulation, the Antichrist and his assistant Satan, Antichrist and his assistant false prophet, you know what he will do? He will get all the forces of the earth to come against Israel, against the nation of Israel to Jerusalem. 20 crores of soldiers will move from India. You can read it in the book of Revelation, India and China. China is already building a road, a Silk Route, that will, from Beijing to Euphrates. And the Euphrates river is drying up now. And once it dries up, and they can move 20 crores for the Ammugian war. And the nation of Israel will be surrounded, Benidorm Valley and around. They will be surrounded and they are going to cry, "God, you come down, Messiah, come and save us." And they cry, "Where are we? We will be with Jesus Christ in heaven, watching over everything." And as they cry, the feet of Jesus Christ will touch the feet, will touch the Mount Olives and it will divide into two. And Jesus Christ will come down and he will kill, he will get Satan and he will change Satan and put him in the bottomless pit for 1,000 years. And he will send the global dictator and the false prophet into hellfire. There will be the first occupants of hell. This is what's going to happen. It is real. What is written in the Bible is real and the nations will be, and Jesus Christ will win the rule. Then he will take over the rule and we will be ruling along with him. Dear brothers, that is going to be the millennial rule. The King of Kings is going to come. Not today's realized are going to rule forever. This world will go. Nations will come and nations will go. You know how many nations have come? 10 nations have come, nine nations have come. We have seen, we have nine nations have come. A lot of, the first nation was nine nations, a canon, a canonite empire has come and gone. Sumerian and Akkadian nation has come and gone. Assyrians have gone. Philistines have gone. Babylonians have gone. Egyptians have gone. Assyrians have gone. Persians have gone. Greeks have gone and Romans have gone. But all these nine nations could not bring the Savior. Therefore, God had to raise a new nation from Genesis chapter 11 through Abraham. We read in Matthew's Gospel, chapter 1, the story of Jesus Christ, the son of Abraham, son of David. So the nation of Israel became the nation that brought forth Jesus Christ, the eternal ruler. See, see the relationship now? Now, all other nations have gone and Jesus Christ has come. There was incarnation, there was crucifixion, there was his resurrection and his ascension and he is going to come back. Dear brothers and sisters, who is going to rule the world? You and I. But for us to rule the world, we have to die. Let us die early so that we are going to take over this world. We will rule the world, there's no doubt about it. Now, how will we rule? How will we rule this world? Will Jesus Christ as the King of Kings and the Lord of Lords? We are going to rule. But remember, that bureaucratic rule will be the most prosperous rule. Number one, that 1,000-year-old world will be the most prosperous and peaceful. Number one, there will be socio-economic transformation. There will be under Jesus Christ, under us. And we will be the global administrative people. Secondly, there will be agricultural prosperity. Food will be plenty, no thorns and thistles, no wilderness, flower and beauty and water plenty. There'll be ethical administration, only truth will survive. There'll be ecological changes, no pollution, air-conditioned environment like Garden of Eden. Then there will be no crime, no police station, no sin assets. Then there will be total redemption. Achedinaiga, we are going to rule the world. Brothers and sisters, are you worried about your education? Are you worried about what will happen to you with your profession? Or see scripts, lifestyle, getting married, getting children? Forget it. COVID has changed everything. That is why God has brought the COVID. Let's look at the positive. Hallelujah, let COVID come, let us die, we are going to rule the world. Why should we worry about this 70 or 80 years of life of misery and sorrow? Apostle Paul said, "Do not be sorrowed like others." So what a joy it will be. We are going to rule the world for 1,000 years. But remember, I want to tell you a warning now. All are not going to rule the world. We all who are Christ lovers, who are born again, will be there in heaven. But only victors will rule the world, only victories. Now, God is going to give us the award depending on our victory. How is he going to evaluate our life? In Matthew's Gospel, chapter 25, we see of somebody who has been given five talents, two talents and one talent. The one who got five and two, they multiplied, is a good and faithful servant. The one who got one, been betrayed, said wicked and lazy servant. Now, how are we going to be evaluated? Same thing, faithfulness. I told you, Shadapthi, one word I would say that she was so faithful. But till her death, she has to be faithful. We all have to be faithful enough. God is not going to look at success. Now remember, what is the job he has given to us? When you become a Christ lover, there's only one mission we have. Mission of rescuing people. Ah, Jesus Christ was setting, he said, "Go, I give you the authority, go and be my witness." There's only one mission for you. There is one mission to rescue people from hellfire. People are dying, millions are dying. What are you doing, my dear brothers and sisters? If Jesus has given you one mission, what are you doing? You have been elected for global administration service, GAS. This is the probation period. Ask our former Kerala chief secretary, our brother James Warkis, how did he treat his probation period at the IAS center? So serious. So you and I are recruited. As we read in Ephesians, chapter 1, you and I are elected before the foundation of the world. We were adopted by him, we were redeemed by him, we are sealed by Holy Spirit. We have been accepted in the beloved and we have been given the dynamite of the Holy Spirit to do this mission of rescuing people from hellfire, nothing else. Then he is going to judge you according to how many people you have disciple, number one. To how many people you have shared about Jesus, nothing else. Not to make money, fame, name, resources, job, no, please, young men and women. With COVID, that has made you to be shut in for four months, three months. We don't know how many more months. Your lifestyle has to be changed, your lifestyle has to be exclusively for the Lord alone, nothing else. Your only job and your mission, your commission to communicate Christ with compassion, nothing else will matter. Millions of people are dying without knowing Jesus Christ. Your own relatives, your own friends, your own brothers, sisters, children are going to an eternal hell without Jesus Christ. Are you concerned? You are worried about your death. But are you worried about what did you do? How will you be accountable as you stand before the judgment seat of Christ? If you are recruited to rule the world, cause global administrative service, GAS, are you serious about your life? Now, five things I want you to remember. If you are taking your life seriously, number one, as we read in Thessalonians chapter 4 and 5, number one, live in holiness. You are called, elected to live a holy life. Live in holiness. Secondly, live in honesty and honest truthful life. Thirdly, live in harmony. Loving one another, caring for one another in harmony. Live in helpfulness, helping one another to build the kingdom of God. Then, live in hospitality. Do you receive the Lord's servants and others in your home? Live in hospitality. Finally, live in helpfulness and live in hope. The hope of Christ, Christ in you, the hope of glory, Jesus Christ is going to come again. The trumpet of the Lord shall sound and time shall be no more. When the roll is called a funder, you shall be there, I shall be there. My dear brothers and sisters, we look at history, past, present and future. You are elected before the foundation of the world to rule the world. God has created you and you to rule the world, but we lost it. But God, through his son, Jesus Christ, has redeemed you. Look at the cross this evening, the cross is empty. Look at the grave this evening, the grave is empty, the tomb is empty. But look at the throne, the throne is filled with the glory of God, of Jesus Christ. He is watching over you this evening. He is going to come back. He is asking you, my dear young brother and sister. You have heard the gospel for so many times. You have been part of the assembly, but how are you behaving? Do you have a lifestyle of Christ-loving nature? Are you living with me? How did you use your time? How did you use your talents? How did you use your treasure? How did you use your truths that I have given you? This is what God is going to use you. I want you to reflect on these things. So COVID should be a time for reflection, for repentance and for the solution, to live for the Lord till he comes.
Thank you, dear uncle, for that wonderful talk on the second coming and how as believers we have to be ready and what is our responsibilities? I think we went into so many wonderful points there and I believe that it has really touched and impacted our lives. This is a talk, a subject that is so relevant to us today for us who are looking forward to the future, looking forward for better days. We clearly heard today that yes, we have better days in future where our king, we are going to rule with our king. So why are we worried about today? There's nothing to be worried about. Now, let's go and hear some wonderful songs. We have our amazing... We have our amazing musicians waiting for us to render some amazing numbers. So I want to start with the first song, Hosanna, Praise is Rising, by our dear brother Jubin, who will be singing and playing. So over to dear brother Jubin.
Our God is God that saved us. Our God is the God that healed our lives. Our God is the God that strengthens us to face each day. Now God is the God that wipes out all our tears. And that is the next song that we are going to sing. We are going to sing praises to our Lord. Hosanna, Hosanna, praise is rising. Eyes are turning to you. We turn to you. A song by Paul Varashy. Let's sing this song. Praise is rising. Praise is rising. Eyes are turning to you. We turn to you. Hope is stirring. Hearts are longing for you. We long for you. Cause when we see you, we find strength to face the day. In your presence, all our fears are washed away, washed away. You are the God who saves us, worthy of all our praises. Come have your way among us. We welcome you here, Lord Jesus. Hear the sound of hearts returning to you. We turn to you. In your kingdom, broken lives are made new. We make us new. Cause when we see you, we find strength to face the day. In your presence, all our fears are washed away, washed away. You are the God who saves us, worthy of all our praises. Come have your way among us. We welcome you here, Lord Jesus. When we see you, we find strength to face the day. In your presence, all our fears are washed away. Cause when we see, cause when we see you, we find strength to face the day. In your presence, all our fears are washed away, washed away. You are the God who saves us, worthy of all our praises. Come have your way among us. We welcome you here, Lord Jesus. Amen.
Thank you, dear Jubin, for that wonderful song, Hosanna, Praise is Rising. What a wonderful Savior we have. Let us sing Hosanna to him. Let us hear another wonderful song by the team of Jeremy and Justin. Jeremy will be playing the instrument and Justin will be singing. Let us hear this wonderful song, We Fall Down.
We worship and praise the Lord that is holy, a lamb holy. It's through his greatness, of his mercy and love that we are at his presence. Sing with us as we praise him. We fall down, we lay our grounds.
We fall down, we lay our grounds at the feet of Jesus. The greatness of your mercy and love at the feet of Jesus. We cry holy, holy, holy. And we cry holy, holy, holy. And we cry holy, holy, holy. Yes, the Lamb. We fall down, we lay our grounds at the feet of Jesus. The greatness of your mercy and love at the feet of Jesus. And we cry holy, holy, holy. And we cry holy, holy, holy. And we cry holy, holy, holy. Yes, the Lamb. We cry holy, holy, holy. And we cry holy, holy, holy. And we cry holy, holy, holy. Yes, the Lamb. My Jesus, my love. I know thou art bound to be the performance of sin. I wish so. Thy gracious invitation, thy Savior at the hour. If ever I love thee, my Jesus, it's now. If ever I love thee, my Jesus, it's now.
If ever I love thee, my Jesus, it's now. What a wonderful song. If ever there was a time for us to love the Lord more than ever before, that time is now. Thank you, dear Jubin and Jeremy and Justin for giving us this wonderful song. We've come to the end of our, of our, of our program. I'm going to quickly close now with the prayer. Before the prayer, I want to say a word of thanks to our God Almighty, who has blessed us today, immensely blessed us. We were praying for this program for so many days and we were hoping to hit a number of three fifty. That was, that was our maximum. That was, that was the height that we could go. But like we just heard, you know, it's, it's faith greater than a mustard seed, yeah? We crossed four hundred participants today. There were more than four hundred people listening to God's word and listening to various sessions today. That is, that is such a wonderful thing and we hope that all of you will come back and will join us again in the future. So thank you so much for coming, thank the Lord for this wonderful time. I also want to thank dear Babu Kewar Gis uncle, all the way from Bombay and, you know, for taking his time. He was so anxious, so, so excited to be part with us. And he seems to be growing younger day by day. And let us pray that God keeps him, gives him a long life so that we can enjoy his ministry in the coming days. I also want to thank dear sister Shadaabti and our brother Sibin as a family. They have two small children and I don't know how, it's so quiet there. Probably the children, I hope they're not too far away. Well, thank you, thank you so much, you know, for joining us and all the way from the States. So it was a blessing to have you with us. And also for our musicians who sang the songs, for the technical team who did a wonderful job. I think the, the team behind has been working very hard and they've done a great job. And I really want to thank them for what they have done. I want to especially say a word of thanks to the elders of this assembly. Always, it has to begin with the leadership and we have wonderful leadership, wonderful elders and praise God for the leadership that God has given to the Ajman Brotherhood Assembly. And in the coming days, I believe that we will continue striving and moving forward with such ministry. So thank you, dear elders, thank you, dear deacons, thank you, dear uncles and especially our sisters who've been praying today since morning, they are continuously kneeling before God and crying and praying. And we've seen the results of that. So thank you, dear sisters, for praying. And all of those faces that I see here in front of me, each of you, thank you so much for joining and blessing us and being part of this. I don't know if I have forgotten anybody, but if there's anyone I have forgotten, I have failed to mention your name, please, please do consider it as a, as a word of, as a word of thanks. Finally, very quickly, let us end with a word of prayer and please be with us till the end of this prayer. I would kindly request dear Jibu uncle to close in prayer.
Let us bow our heads for prayer. O Lord, our heavenly Father, we thank you for this blessed evening that you have given us to listen from the word of God. This moment, we are reminded of the beautiful words of Simeon. For mine eyes have seen thy salvation, which you have prepared before the face of all people. Lord, thank you for the blessed message that you have given through us, brother Babu uncle. What a blessed privilege we have in our Lord Jesus. As we read in the scripture, therefore we are receiving a kingdom which cannot be more. Let us have grace whereby we may serve God acceptably with reverence and godly fear. Lord, continue to bless this ministry so that many could hear from, many could hear from your word and come to know you better. We pray for all the brothers and sisters who could join this meeting today. Lord, continue to bless and keep people safe wherever we are. We pray for the technical team and all the dear ones who are behind this event. We thank you for all the blessings that you have showered upon us. We pray for our church and we pray for all our gatherings. Lord, as we depart now, guide us and keep us safe under your care. Whatever we do, see or hear, let it be for your glory alone. We ask all these things, in the soon coming name of our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ.
Amen.
Amen.